Linda, could you please give the invocation?
Okay, let's bow our heads. Our Father dwelling in the heavenly realms, may the glory of your name be the center on which our lives turn and the center on which decisions are made in this meeting this evening. Lord, manifest your kingdom realm and cause your every purpose to be fulfilled on earth for this city and all who dwell here, just as it is fulfilled as it is fulfilled in heaven. We acknowledge you as our provider of all we need each moment and each day. Forgive us the wrongs we have done in the past or in this present time, as we ourselves release forgiveness to those who have wronged us. Rescue us every time we face tribulation and set us free from the violence and all manner of evil. Bring your peace, your love, your presence, and your unity to this city, for you are the king who rules this city with power and glory forever. Amen.
Thank you, Linda. So now we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller?
Here.
Alderpersons Borneman and Monroe are absent. Present, Ross?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Busker?
Here.
Shadle is also absent. Mysick?
Here.
And Barr?
Here.
And Mayor, could I, could I please ask that when council members and staff speak that they lean forward into the microphone so that the listening audience can hear and the recording equipment picks it up?
Yeah, I think that's doable. Thank you. So now we will stand for the pledge allegiance led by Alderman Busker.
(Inaudible) of United States of America and to the Republic or which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Item number one is the approval of the agenda.
Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Ross. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number two is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on February 21st, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Barr, seconded by Alderman Ross. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes as well. Public comments, there is none signed up on agenda items, so we'll move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of approving to, I'm sorry, the consent agenda is routine all in one motion unless there's a member of the council that would like to have something removed for further discussion. Is there anything, council? The consent agenda consists of approving to receive and place on file the board and commission minutes from the Foreign Fire Insurance Board and dated December 8th, 2022, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners from January 24th, 2023, the building permit reports for February 23, the finance bills payable in the total of $1,051,957.73, approval of payroll for pay period ending February 25th, 2023, in the total of $560,153.13, and the finance report and cash investment report for both in December 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next is recognition of service awards. Chief Summers.
Tonight, I'd like to recognize Justin Holden for five years of service with the Freeport Police Department. During that time, he served as an FTO on the emergency response team. He's also been on our, our gang unit for the last few years. And I can tell you, in the last two years, Officer Holden has probably done five years' worth of work just on his work with some of these gang members. As, as you've all seen, we've taken 75 guns off the street last year, and Officer Holden was involved in a vast majority of those. So I'd like to present you with a certificate for five years of service. I appreciate all the hard work you did. Thank you.
Chief Miller?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to invite Lieutenant Chris Potempa up here. Lieutenant Chris Potempa was hired at the Freeport Fire Department March 31st, 2008. He was promoted to the rank of lieutenant May 7th of 2018. Some of the certificates that he holds is certified paramedic. Fire officer, too, he's also one of the deployable members for the technical rescue team with MABUS, so he's qualified to be sent or deployed anywhere in the United States and more specifically even Illinois here. He also holds an associate degree in fire science from Rock Valley College, bachelor's degree from fire science, fire service management, Southern Illinois, master's degree, master of science, public safety and homeland security administration, also through Southern Illinois. His accomplishments, he's a member of our honor guard. He's also a member of the Foreign Fire Insurance Board. He's the vice president. And he's the vice president of Freeport Firefighters Local 441. He's here tonight with his wife Nikki and his four children, Kylie, Grace, Rosie, and Bradley, and his parents as well. So with that, I'd like to present this certificate of, of service to you, 15 years. I'm sure you'd like to step up here and say something to the...
Something's really pretty. I was just thinking in the microphone.
That'd be a little bit...
I'd just like to thank my family, particularly my wife and kids. Their sacrifice that they've made this last 15 years, all the Christmases and stuff that I've missed and all that, so thank you for your commitment. A lot of people overlook the families. I do not, so thank you.
And also, here's a little something for you to spend downtown merch.
All right, we will move on to item number six, which is the second reading of ordinance 202307. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending various provisions of the codified ordinances regarding parking and adopting a master parking map.
Thank you. Attorney Zito?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the council is aware from the first reading, we are looking to change the parking regulations to utilize a master parking map as opposed to how it is currently written out in prose in the codified ordinances. We believe, staff believes that the utilization of a, a map as opposed to writing out in prose is going to be more clear for department staffs to utilize and understand what the parking regulations are downtown. Again, there wouldn't have been no changes since the first reading, so if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Do we have anything, council? Then Alderman Parker, if you could flip the lights back on, we will take the roll.
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The ordinance passes five to zero.
Item number seven is the second reading of ordinance 202308. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving special use permit application for Fiesta Cancun at 2061 West Calina Avenue.
Thank you. Director Duckman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff received a special use permit application from Fiesta Cancun in Freeport for a restaurant selling alcoholic beverages at 2061 West Calina Avenue. And our zoning code states that restaurants, taverns, packaged liquor stores, and any other establishments selling alcoholic beverages for consumption on or off premises requires a special use permit. On February 2nd, 2023, the zoning board of appeals recommended approval with a vote of five yays, zero nays, and one abstention. On February 9th, 2023, the planning commission approved the motion by a vote of, excuse me, they approved it with a voice vote, and then six of the nine members were present. Staff, in line with the planning commission and zoning board of appeals, staff recommends approval of the ordinance.
Discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Abstain.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
Attorney Zito, is this just a majority? Do we need the mayor?
I don't think it hurts, actually. That's probably a good idea to call the mayor.
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero with one abstention.
And item number eight is the second reading of ordinance 202309. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving special use permit application for 1669 Willard Drive.
And could you please add to the record at 611 Alderman Monroe entered the meeting?
Thank you.
Director Duckman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff received a special use application from Salmon Ilu for a restaurant serving alcoholic beverages at 1669 Willard Drive. And on February 2nd, 2023, the City of Freeport Zoning Board of Appeals recommended approval of the petitioner's request by a vote of six yays, zero nays, and zero abstentions. And on February 9th, 2023, the planning commission approved the motion by a voice, voice vote where six of the nine members were in attendance. And in line with the zoning board of appeals as well as the planning commission, staff recommends approval of this ordinance.
Any discussion on this one? Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Abstain.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero with one abstention.
And item number nine is the first reading of ordinance 202310. Could you please read this?
Ordinance adopting zoning map.
Manager Bukas?
Your Honor, I'm going to turn the time over to Director Duckman.
Okay, Director Duckman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Illinois compiled statutes requires a map to be published annually for zoning districts. And our updated zoning map for 2022, it reflects all the zoning changes that were made as of December 31st, 2022. There was one amendment to zoning map in 2022. And based on this information, staff recommends approval of the ordinance. I'm sorry, to move it forward.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Ross to move ordinance 202310 on to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Was there any discussion on this, council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 10, which is the adoption of resolution 202322. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving agreement with Fairgram for wastewater treatment plant phase one construction engineering.
Thank you. Director Boyer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Due to failing infrastructure of our influence area, detention, deteriorating headworks, piping, and pumping equipment, and increased discharge regulations, the city entered into the first phase of a multi-phase program to renovate the wastewater treatment plant. The phase one design and engineering agreement signed December of 2020 with Fairgram included design for the headworks and chemically enhanced primary treatment system and to avoid future combined sewer overflows to the Pecatonica River. It also included design of the new laboratory administrative building. Complete, and the project is out for bid. Fairgram has submitted proposal for construction engineering services, wastewater treatment plant phase one improvements, Freeport, Illinois. The proposal includes loan administration, management, construction observation, project and contract management, construction layout, facilities, safety training, and CE startup testing, training, and assistance. The funding for this agreement in the amount of $3,225,000 is through the Illinois EPA revolving loan fund and is incorporated with total cost of the project. Currently, the city is pursuing a total of $10 million in forgivable loan funds, and the total cost of the project is estimated at $40 million. Staff requests city council approve resolution 2023-22 and enter into the professional services agreement for wastewater treatment plant phase one improvements with Fairgram.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded, I'm sorry, by Alderman Monroe, seconded by Alderman Parker for the adoption of resolution 202322. Is there any further discussion, council? Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted six to zero.
Item number 11 is the adoption of resolution 202323. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving agreement with Fairgram for production well number 12 and wellhouse treatment facility.
Director Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. The water utility currently relies on three drinking water production wells, wells five and seven at the Brick Street Water Treatment Plant, well eight at Carroll Tank, and well nine at Willow, the Willow Ground Storage Tank. Additionally, construction on Berchard Hill is well 11 is nearing completion and should be online by the end of the summer. Once well 11 is online, the city water utility will idle the Brick Street facility. However, due to the need for operational redundancy, the Brick Street plant can only be taken offline or decommissioned once additional source water capacity is brought online. Development of the new production well number 12 and treatment facility at the Willow Storage Site will provide the necessary operational redundancy sufficient to decommission the Brick Street Treatment Plant and improve the quality of the drinking water in areas west of Park Street with the addition of iron filtration. Fairgram has submitted proposal for professional services, new production well number 12 and wellhouse number 12 treatment facility. The proposal includes design engineering to construct well 12 and constructing the water filtration plant at the Willow Site. The total amount of this agreement is $1,128,000. Preliminary information indicates the following, or the funding for this agreement will be through the newly established emerging contaminants funds through the federal EPA. However, if the funding structure changes, this agreement could also be funded through the Illinois EPA revolving loan fund. Staff requests city council approve resolution 2023-23 and enter into agreement with, for design and engineering for new production well and treatment facility number 12.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Barr for the adoption of resolution 202323. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted six to zero.
And item number 12 is the adoption of resolution 202324. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving agreement with Fairgram for wastewater treatment plant I EPA facility plan.
Thank you. Director Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Water and Wastewater Utility is currently implementing system-wide upgrades such as water main replacements, construction of wellhouse 11, and is preparing to bid necessary improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Improvements to date are funded by a combination of revolving fund loans, grants, and other forgivable loans. Access to these funds is based on the 2017 wastewater facility plan. Every five years, the, the plan requires updating to produce, provide access to future projects for funding sources through the state. It is necessary to update this plan this year. Fairgram submitted proposal for professional services, proposal for 2023 wastewater treatment plant, facility plan amendment, City of Freeport, Illinois. The proposal includes updates to the... Through project management and meetings, condition assessment, flow and loading analysis, waste characterization study, process, model development, alternative development, structural analysis assessment, economic evaluation, I EPA plan, project plan checklist, and facility plan amendment preparation. The funding for this agreement of $125,000 is through the Water Operations Engineering Services Budget. Staff requests city council approve resolution 2023-24 and enter into the agreement for professional services facility plan amendment with Fairgram.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Parker for the adoption of resolution 202324. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted six to zero.
And number 13 is approval of the bid opening from January 17th, 2023 for a cargo van. Chief Summers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The police department is in need of replacing the vehicle that transports the emergency response team to specific missions assigned to the ERT. The current transport vehicle is a 2000 Chevrolet cargo van. The van has rust issues to the frame, and it's unreliable, keeping a charge in the battery. The department has taken steps to mitigate the issues, however, the issues persist. On 117th, 2023, the police department held a squad bid opening for new squads. Prior to the bid opening, the police department hand-delivered packages to the local car dealerships. At the time of the opening, the department received one local bid from Barco Automotive. This bid was the only bid that the department received for the cargo van. The Barco's bid was $56,386. The police department recommends the acceptance of the Barco bid for $56,386. This was planned in a normal budgeting for this year.
So moved to approve.
Seconded.
Here we have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Monroe. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Item number 14 is a motion to approve a replacement of a 14-foot dump box on the 2008 International Truck. Director Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Street Division Truck 72 experienced a dump body failure during snow removal operations this year. The cause of the failure is due to a combination of factors including deferred maintenance, age, and mental fatigue. Truck 72 is currently out of service, and because of the failure mode, the dump body is not repairable. Truck 72 is critical to the city's construction operations, and immediate repairs necessary before construction season. The estimated lead time for repairs currently 11 weeks, and staff received a dump body replacement estimate from a road truck for $34,743. This item is budgeted in the Street Division Operations and Maintenance Funds. Staff requests council approval of road trucks, equipment estimate for, to perform the replacement.
Alderman Busker?
What's the mileage on the chassis? I think it's about 30,000 miles.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Ross. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
And item number 15 is a motion to approve the intent to enter into an agreement with the Illinois Police Chiefs Association regarding the linebacker program. Manager Bukas?
Thank you, Your Honor. With the announced retirement of our police chief, Mayor Summers, I'm in the process now of looking for an interim police chief until we do a formal police search. The Illinois Association of Police Chiefs has a program called their linebacker program where they send out requests for applicants that are retired police chiefs and other command officers. We're in the process right now of interviewing a couple of people for this position, and it's, it's part of the agreement with the Illinois Association of Police Chiefs is they require 10% fee for whatever we pay that police chief, interim police chief for their services. And so this agreement that's before you tonight is, is a draft of the agreement that we'd enter into, and because I'd like to get the police, the interim police chief to start as soon as possible, probably around March 10th. I know it's a Friday, but that's what we're shooting for right now. I'd like council to approve this, this agreement at this time.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Monroe to approve as stated. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
No.
The, just the motion passes five to one.
And item number 16 is reports of department heads, finance?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Community development?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Public works?
I'd just like to report that the lead service line replacement program is going very well. We've replaced over 300 lead service lines, and we're taking them out at the rate of anywhere between 10 and 15 per day. So we're making really great progress, and I just want to say thank you to Fairgram and also Fishers for the, for the hard work.
Thank you. Fire?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to report that our new ladder truck is in, and it's coming along quite nicely. We're currently working on filling out our compartments. We're organizing and determining where some of that equipment will wind up and go. We're doing that in-house. So, and also today began day one of three days of intense training from a Pierce representative that are out here. So they will be working with each shift to ensure that they have some familiarity and start with the experience process with their training. They began this morning before nine o'clock, and as of 5:00 PM, they were still going at it. So it's quite intense and rigorous, but we're pleased with their training that they're giving us at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Police?
Nothing from the police department tonight.
Thank you. Library?
Thank you. It is Food for Fines Month this March, so we're expecting, accepting donations of non-perishable food in jars, cans, and sealed packets. One food donation equals $1 off of your fines, and this does not include replacements for fees that were charged for lost or damaged items. But it's pretty popular. People really like it, so make sure to let people know that it's Food for Fines time.
Thank you. Communications? Thank you. IT? All right. City managers report?
Thank you, Your Honor. I only have one item to discuss tonight, and that's that we've been monitoring the Pecatonica and Yellow Creek waters levels for the last couple of weeks, and we do have some minor flooding out near Mary Street right now. The pack's currently at 13.12 feet. Minor flooding starts to occur at 13 feet. So we are monitoring it. It looks like it's supposed to go down starting sometime tomorrow night, so we're hopeful that'll go down quickly. And that's all I have for tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. I just have one thing to remind the constituents that April 4th is the consolidated election, and there are several seats from Alderman School Board, Park District, as well as Highland Community College trustees. And actually, early vote starts on Friday. So early vote, you can do that in the lower level of the Stewart Center on Douglas. So please exercise your right to vote. We will move on to Alderman Busker.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Mysick?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Barr?
I just want to say thank you and recognize the emergency services, the street department, ice storm, it seems like a million years ago, but I know it was only a week or two ago, and a lot of compliments, a lot of comments on, on the fast response, and I can't imagine the number of calls that came in, so thank you for, for the ice storm service.
Thank you. Alderman Monroe?
I'd also like to second that, and thank you for fixing the giant potholes on Greenfield near Galena. It was very nice.
It's very nice, I don't have to dodge those anymore. But, you know, it's, we've made a lot of progress with the roads this year, in the last couple of years. And an interesting number that I've heard, you know, bouncing around, the hard work that Fairgram is doing, the hard work that our directors are doing, finding money to help pay for some of these projects that our community just can't afford to get fixed. So, you know, they're doing a great job of finding federal and state funds, and, you know, kudos to all of you for, because I think we're finally turning the needle. It feels good, it looks good, and we're starting to get there. That's all.
Thank you. Alderman Ross?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
And Alderman Parker?
Just to touch on the same thing, I'm around town all the time. I see the street department out, and they're doing a great job. Thank you.
And next would be public comment. Tommy? Go ahead, ma'am, you've signed in, so Kathy, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Krieger. I'm here because of the ice storm. I share a drive with 1230 South High, owned by Christine Hatlack. On the morning after the ice storm, 2/24/23, my husband had to be in Madison at 10:40 to see a cancer oncologist. We were out at 6:00 that morning trying to clear our driveway. My whole driveway was blocked. I sent an email, a text to my owner person, no response. I sent texts and pictures to the property owner, no response. I sent two emails to the mayor with pictures, three or four calls to community development. Finally, last Wednesday, Supervisor Doug shows up. He never bothered to get out of his truck. And if he would have bothered to look up from his phone, he would have noticed that across the street at 12:35, there was a huge branch on the sidewalk. The only thing Doug had to say was, "Well, that storm was last week." And when I complained about my blocked driveway, he says, "Well, it's not blocked now." Twice, "It's not blocked now." That was when I offered my spontaneous assessment of his character. This property at 12:30 has been a problem since this woman purchased it. During the summer, the thugs from across the street would hang out on this empty property doing drugs, gambling, dealing drugs, blocking the street. Because his parents did not want those hoodlums on their property, they would hang out on my side of the street on this empty property. I still have a text I sent to Christine dated 7/18/21. One of these guys was pissing on her house. That's the second time that day in broad daylight. Another guy was seen pissing on the tree in front of her house. I texted her about this, no response. She has done absolutely nothing to improve this property value, and the city continues to let her slide. The house is boarded up, it's condemned. I've complained many times to the city about the criminal activity going on. I would think that the vacant property ordinance was at least being violated. I was told it was a police problem. The police couldn't do anything because she would not put up no trespassing signs. The chief agitator left the neighborhood for a period, and things calmed down. I'm sure the police can verify this, that there was no more trouble up there. It got quiet, quiet. If the city maybe would have enforced that vacant house ordinance, we wouldn't need the cops up there so often to chase these people off. Now, she is scheduled to start cleanup on 3/14/23. Unfortunately, that is before the next city council. So hopefully, I won't have to be back. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Tommy?
Police chief, you do a good job, Ben. Doing a good job, and you were going to miss here. And, I think you.
Not since I saw you last week, Tommy.
We went there, me and Ben, we had, we, I bet Jody Moen missed that one. We went to see the house, but him and Ben went down there Tuesday.
Thank you.
It's a bad safe.
All right, thank you, Tommy.
And I want to tell you, Jody Moen, you do a good job of the mayor.
Thank you, Tommy.
And we want to know what, is it update about the IB grocery store?
Well, when we know something, we'll be sure to tell you.
Because Wendy said he went to see it. Wait, Wendy?
And Linda?
I just want to inform the public that on March 14th, next Tuesday, at 6:00, there's a municipal election candidate forum at the Wagner House. It starts at 6:00, cash, bar, and food, and the presentations and questions will be at 6:30 PM. It's Alderman, the FSD 145 School Board, HCC Board, and the Freeport Park District Board. Candidates will be there. It's hosted by Wagner House, County Board, Scott Helms, and the Upper Northwest Illinois Republican Women. So come on out, meet the candidates, and see what they're all about.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, item number 21 is executive session. Could you please read this?
We will use all three exemptions. 5 ILCS, 122C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. 5 ILCS, 122C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. 5 ILCS, 122C11, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Seconding.
A motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Busker?
Aye.
Mysick?
Aye.
Barr?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
And Parker?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.